All right, everyone, if we could have everyone's attention, please. We'd like to start the city council meeting. The hour of 6:00 PM, having come and gone, like to call the regular meeting of the city council to order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Here.
Everyone, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
This time, we'd like to invite Pastor Cortland Stokes up for a moment of prayer. Pastor Stokes?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Let us pray. Our God and Father, we thank you for this another opportunity to come before you and to come before your throne of grace boldly. We thank you that your ears are open as we pray tonight. We thank you for every leader in this room, every person that represents this community. We thank you for the mayor and his leadership team. We offer a special prayer tonight for Alderman Smith in his absence, whether he be on the way or not. But, Lord, we ask you to remember him tonight as he carried the burden and weight of caring for those residents in the Park area who have suffered such a great loss this year. We ask that you will strengthen him, O God, and keep him strong and encouraged. We pray tonight for our police and firemen, and we ask for a successful night out against crime this coming Tuesday. We pray that the blessing of the Lord be upon that event, and we thank you in advance in Jesus' name. Amen.
Is there anyone who would like to address the city council? We're in the process where we're at the point of our agenda public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on items on the agenda? If not, we'd invite our police chief up. Do you have a comment about Tuesday's event?
Oh, yes. I thought you were gonna catch me off guard there. I think I handed one out to everybody here. Tuesday, August 2nd, is our National Night Out Against Crime. It's an event where the community and the police come together. This year's event is gonna be bigger than last year's. I kinda made that promise last year, and we were able to come through. So, we're gonna have a DJ, food trucks, and activities for the kids. So, Tuesday, August 2nd, 5:00 to 8:00, come join us, and we're looking to see you there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Tonight is a...I wanted to start this meeting by congratulating all of the members of the city council, our city treasurer, our city clerk. We passed a $53 million budget last night that was balanced. Each of the Aldermen had some great suggestions, and Aldermen not only were involved in the process, which was led by Finance Chairman Alderman Gardner, an entire finance committee, but we had the opportunity to work together to present our residents with a balanced budget that had zero tax increase. This budget not only cared for the needs of the residents of the Park River Oaks, the residents who came in and got assistance, which each Alderman is involved in, but it also allowed us the opportunity to expand programs, not only for our residents, but also for our city. So, I'm proud to announce that we passed the balanced budget last night. If anyone would like a copy of the budget, you're more than welcome to call my office, call the clerk's office. But I want to congratulate and thank each of the Aldermen for not only the hard work with passing the budget, but also for the long nights we spent working on the budget on behalf of the people. Thank you, Alderman, and appreciate the support of passing the budget.
Thank you.
Alderman Gardner, did you want to make any comments regarding the budget?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. There was lengthy discussion regarding the budget. I'm glad that my colleagues, we had great discussion and conversation about several items included in the 2023 budget. I'm just excited we got it passed, and I thank Finance Director Kasperic for his hard work and expertise and his institutional knowledge in Calumet City pertaining to the city's finances. I'm excited about it. I'm excited about the council, the camaraderie that we had, the conversation, the ideas, the exchange of ideas, the inclusiveness, and that's all I got to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. At this moment, we have approval of the minutes. Before you have the minutes submitted for the agenda, are there any changes or any discussion on the minutes? If not, can someone please make a motion to approve the minutes as stated on the agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Next item is Report of Standing Committees. We'll start with Finance. Alderman Gardner?
I already spoke tonight, Mayor, but thank you so much for the acknowledgement. Thank you.
Public Safety, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Public Utilities, Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing. It was suggested at our last coffee and conversation with the Aldermen, which was two Saturday days ago, I believe, one of our residents suggested an interesting initiative that I think we're gonna definitely look into. She suggested calling it Light Up the Sixth Ward, but I would argue that we could, you know, if we can find ways to get this done, you know, expand this citywide. And essentially, what she was saying was, you know, coming up with some sort of initiative to incentivize residents or to encourage residents to have their front porch lights turned on in the evening to light up our blocks a little bit, to supplement what the streetlights are doing, and just make our blocks feel a little bit more well-lit and safe. So, I'm in the process of talking to our contacts at ComEd to find out about any grants or any opportunities they may have, similar to what the fire department has with the American Red Cross and the smoke detector program, to see if we can find a way to provide all residents who wish to participate with, you know, a low...an energy-efficient lightbulb to put in their front porch light. So, there'll be more information coming on that as I get it, but I just wanted to announce that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Ald...I'm sorry, Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Health, Education, and Welfare will be hosting Back to School Fair on August 13th in Memorial Park from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We'd like to thank those who have already committed and donated to the Back to School Fair for all of the children who reside in Calumet City. Regardless of what ward you live in, you may attend. You do have to register at AldermanWilson.com. Thank you to Alderman Gardner for your commitment and donation of bookbags. I will be sending out from my personal email again donation requests to everyone else that wants to participate. I do have to thank State Representative Marcus Evans, as well as State Representative Nicholas Smith. I'm waiting on one state representative from our local area to get back to me with his commitment of donation as he's writing. Hopefully, that's a check for this event.
Will they accept that?
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right. We will wait until if Alderman Smith or Alderman Navarrete have a report. City council reports, Alderman Patton, start on this side.
I have a question on the city council report.
Okay. Alderman Gardner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind the Fifth Ward residents of the Back to School Bash in partnership with Lincoln Elementary District 156, August 13th, timed from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We're gonna be giving away bookbags, school supplies. Walgreens will be on-site providing COVID vaccinations and physicals to children. We also have a partnership with Networks Barber College where they're gonna be providing back-to-school free haircuts for children. So, be there. I want to see the families out there and the children out there come get out and get free bookbags and school supplies and all that good stuff. Also, the fire department will be there, the police department will be there. They've confirmed their attendance, and I look forward to seeing the residents there. Those of you that have contacted my office regarding the CCRAP program, the program is now officially over. We are out of funds, correct? That's what I was told today. So, if you have not applied for that, we're sorry, but we're out of funds. And so, if you need other resources, please contact our office. Don't hesitate to call us. There are other programs out there that help and assist with utilities and so on and so forth. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Patton?
Thank you. Just two quick things. First of all, speed bumps. Our speed bumps finally arrived. I received word this morning that a huge segment of the speed bumps for the Sixth Ward will put down this morning. So, I just want to especially thank Josh Brown at Public Works for getting that taken care of. We had a big list and a lot of residents that were getting...they were very patient with us, but, you know, as you can imagine, this late in the year, patience was starting to wear thin. So, just thank you to Josh at Public Works for getting that taken care of. And then alleys as well. I've gotten a number of calls about alleys. Public Works is working through the list. It sounds like most of the alleys that I've submitted so far this summer have been taken care of in the last couple of weeks. But if you have an alley that still has not been graded yet or smoothed out yet, please give me a call, 708-891-8196. Now I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one or two quick items. First, we honor God who makes all things possible. Just want to remind the residents of the Third and Fourth Ward Town Hall Meeting this coming Monday at Downey Park, 300 Jeffrey Avenue at 6:30 PM. So, I'll see you then, and I'll defer to Alderman Tillman, who will explain the upcoming Third and Fourth Ward Back to School Picnic. Thank you.
Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 13th, from noon to 4:00 PM, the Third and Fourth Ward will be hosting its sixth annual Back to School BBQ. We'll be giving away bookbags, school supplies, there'll be a game truck, food. We'll be having prizes, a basketball competition, face painting. We're gonna have a photo booth. We'll have the Jesse White tumblers once again performing for us. We'll have a locally famous DJ DJ in the event, and possibly we'll have a dunk tank that I'm gonna try to convince the mayor and some local elected officials to clam into. So, if you all have some frustrations, feel free to...
You don't get nobody throwing baseballs at me.
But we invite everybody out. It's August 13th, again, noon to 4:00 PM. It'll be at Downey Park, 300 Jeffrey Avenue. We look forward to having a good event. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Second Ward on this Sunday, July 31st, we have a grand opening in our ward, Woo Woo's BBQ, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They are located at 1050 Sibley Avenue or Sibley Boulevard. I do ask that you all come out and support the businesses in our ward when they have a grand opening. It is important. Please come out and support Woo Woo's. Again, August 2nd, National Night Out. Show your Second Ward support, your Second Ward pride. Wear those shirts. If you do not have a shirt, please call me or text me and let me know. I do have a few shirts left. We give out those shirts at ward meetings, so that means that you didn't make one. August 3rd, we are set for our Second Ward meeting. It's the first Wednesday of every month. Right now, we're tentatively set for the Public Safety Center, 24 State Street. And we run from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. We will keep it short this month, but we do ask that you come out. Again, August 13th is the Back to School Fair. I'm asking for volunteers for the Second Ward to come out, wear your Second Ward shirts. We will have a busy day for our fire and police because they will also be at our event, as well as free food, a DJ, a very spectacular surprise from Hip Hop Bounce Around, as well as some other vendors who live in the Second Ward that are giving back to our students, as well as school supplies. The speed bumps, like Alderman Patton stated, are here. We are finalizing all of the intersections that have not received speed bumps. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your phone calls regarding today's events. I will speak to each resident personally that called after I speak with the police chief. Should you need me, please feel free to contact me, 708-586-4990. You can reach me by phone, or you can text me. You can email me at secondwardforwilson@gmail.com. Thank you. God bless Calumet City and the Second Ward.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. For the record, Alderman Navarrete is at the meeting at 6:18. Alderman, you want to give your report, or you want us to come back?
No report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
We are at Item 8, informational items to be placed on file. Does anyone have any questions regarding the information items submitted? There's Item D, and just want to recognize Item D, where one of our residents not only called, but about Captain Derek Bryant, to give him a report and congratulations for his exceptional work in response to an issue that happened in Calumet City. So, I wanted to highlight that, just thank him and the fire department and the entire police department for responding as well. But I wanted to highlight Item D on the information items. Item G, City Treasurer, did you want to talk about Item G on the agenda, the NYMAC?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we received a communication from NYMAC, who is our electrical aggregation broker, advising us that all residents who are participating in the city's aggregation program should be receiving a credit on their July Commonwealth Edison Electric Bill. This credit will continue on for the next four months. The credit itself is called the Carbon-Free Energy Resource Adjustment. Once again, Carbon-Free Energy Resource Adjustment. The residents will receive a credit on their bill for the months of July, August, September, and October. This is primarily due to the state passing legislation ensuring the profitability of three Exelon nuclear reactors that Exelon was threatening to shut down. For residential customers who are in the aggregation program, this means that you are protected from the current power market increases and will enjoy a 4.3 cent per kilowatt-hour credit for the next four months. The eight months following that, you'll be receiving a 3.6 cent kilowatt-hour credit till the next year, and these things are readjusted. As always, if you have any questions about the information I provided for you, please feel free to contact me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Information items to be placed on file, is there a motion to accept Items 8A through H?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Patton?
No, Gardner.
Gardner, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. These items will be placed on file. Item 9 on the agenda is new business items. Items 9A through 7? Two of the items that we mentioned to Alderman in the Ordinance and Resolution Committee, we have the ordinance about having our city attorneys look at squatters. We know we had an issue in the past. These items will also be taken up, Alderman Tillman, by the zoning board in the upcoming meeting. There are five items that will be on the zoning board. The law requires us to have a public hearing, and there'll be five items on the zoning board meeting coming up. So, if any Aldermen have items that you want the zoning board to consider, they will start taking cases at the next meeting. But on the upcoming meeting, Item 5 will be discussed, and also two other items. Item 4 and 5, I'm sorry.
Mayor, question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. For Item Number 6, do we have a timeline for when that might be issued? Do you know? Maybe a couple of weeks or...
Director Tillman, Item 6 on the agenda, that deals with our properties that we have on our demolition list. The goal was the...we wanted to not only put out for vendors for asbestos remediation, but also for...to select demolition companies. So, that goes out now, and we'll probably get it back. Does that answer your question, Alderman?
Sure, yeah. I guess if we could just share the RFP when it's produced, that's all. Thank you. Thank you, Director Tillman.
The property that many of us know about, that one is on emergency order, and then the other is on four emergency orders to be demolished.
Is this through the end of this year, or is it... Members of this elect... Through next July?
Through next July. Any other questions on the new business items, 9A, 1 through 7? If not, entertain a motion to approve new business items?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Mayor?
Yes.
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 Building permits. We have building permits before you and new sign construction.
Can we take Number 3 separately?
Yes.
May I statewide?
You want to approve the building permits, or just...
Okay.
Are there any questions regarding Item B 1? If not, can you entertain a motion to approve Items B 1?
Do we think we'll approve it pending the...
Yes.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Williams, with amended motion for the Seventh Ward, Alderman. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on Item B 1?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item B 3, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I am asking that my colleagues vote no on this one, only until the residents of the Second Ward have an opportunity to sit down with the car wash. We've had things planned previously that either the administration or the car wash had to cancel. But before approving things that range in height of 18 feet to 31 feet in illumination, making us almost a little baby Vegas of lights in a residential neighborhood, I'm asking that we be able to sit down and speak so we can have some of our concerns addressed that have never been addressed. We know collectively as a ward that this car wash is gonna move forward, but we still have some concerns, and I am asking for the respect of the residents in my ward, that you vote no. Just hold off until we can meet with them. Thank you.
Alderman, and I appreciate that, this project is Buddy Bear Car Wash. It's already been approved, and the process is in place. This is a $15 million project that's coming to Calumet City that has no impact on the meeting with residents regarding the sign request. So, this is a project that's already in place, and...
And I understand. I signed my mortgage 20-something years ago when it was no Buddy Bear Car Wash, and so did my neighbors, many of whom are looking to relocate elsewhere. And it is concerning that we cannot talk to the people that are building essentially in our backyards. And I understand that we cannot stop this, but nothing hurts communication. And we should be able to say, hey, we want to ensure this, this, and this happens, and this doesn't happen. And when we talk about approving eight pages worth of Las Vegas-type lights in a residential neighborhood that has become a custom 20 to 30 years of not having that illumination, we should be able to speak to Buddy Bear Car Wash. And you do not have to vote the way that I'm asking. I just...I will be on record fighting for my constituents.
I appreciate that, Alderman. Now, listen, we have to move this forward. This is new business in our town, signed. So, is there a motion to...for this?
So moved.
Quick, just... Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams?
Mayor, can I have a discussion briefly, Mayor, please?
Yes.
Just, would it be possible, and I know we already had a motion on the floor, but, I mean, the construction of the establishment still looks like it has a ways to go. I mean, is it, for signage purposes, I think it would be okay to try to defer at least one meeting? I mean, the construction looks like it still has a few months left. I don't know if there was a possibility just for the colleagues to defer to the next meeting?
Alderman's request is... The Alderman's request is for a meeting with them, which we will help arrange. The meeting has nothing to do with the sign permit.
But it does. It does. Because even though most of the signage is facing east, there still is that field on the east side of the establishment, and that is where people's kitchens are. So, to have these bright lights shining into their kitchens where they're eating with their families, they should have their concerns addressed. Whether it is going to change anything, we don't know unless we have conversation, and that's all I'm asking, is that we hold off until we can have conversation, since our ward has been denied conversation with this business.
Do we know if it's in accordance, I'm assuming, with our signage ordinance that we have?
It was signed by Alderman Smith. It was verified by Director Tillman. It was verified by the Inspection Services and verified by our fire department. So, it's signed.
Is that the process? I was not familiar with the process, so I...
Director Tillman, that's the process?
What was the...
The process for signage approval, I know we have a signage ordinance, I think that Alderman Smith had introduced, and Alderman Williams some time ago.
So, the reason being that it's going to be passed forward is because of the length of the sign. The ordinance states it cannot be 100 square feet, and then the seats are about a little over maybe 10 feet, maybe 110, 112 feet as it relates to the illumination. It meets the sign code requirements. They're asking for the approval now because of the timeframe it takes to order the sign timeframe it takes in quartering the sign and parts.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Padden?
No.
Have a rest.
No.
No.
Yes.
There's three yeses and three nos. In the event of a tie, the mayor gets to break the tie. I vote yes to pass item B3 on the agenda for approval. Under item C, Resolutions and Ordinances, we have Resolutions 1 and 1 through 3 on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve Resolutions and Ordinances C1 through 3?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Padden. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Have a rest.
Yes.
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 Gardner?
Yes.
Padden?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'd like to request a brief executive session for the purposes of, applying to a specific individual, pending legal matters. Is there a motion to go into executive session at 6:34 PM?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Padden, second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session. We will come back and do business, so you guys can hang out. We'll be right back. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 6:53 PM?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Tillman?
Second by who?
Second by Alderman Tillman.
Y'all don't know your name?
At this time, I would also like to, for the record, excuse Alderman Smith from the meeting tonight. I did receive a message from Alderman Smith, so just for the record, he has an excused absence. We are under D Financial Matters, D Financial Matters 1 through 24.
I make a motion to- Approve Financial Matters D1 through 24 as presented.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Gardner.
Mayor, discussion?
Are we going to-
Discussion. City Treasurer, Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 18, the correct account number should be 01041-52119. And item number 19, the correct number should be 30707-52430, Professional Services. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, discussion? May we amend item number one?
Yes. Let me find the amended language. So item number one should be amended to approve the finance director, city attorney, bond counsel, bond underwriters, to prepare bond ordinance and all necessary documents for the issue of bonds, not to exceed $41 million for the items stated for infrastructure projects, equipment purchases, and projects the city council will take up. That's the amended motion for item number one.
It was 31 million, correct?
31.
31, 1. 31 million, I'm sorry.
Just trying to slip 10 million.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Have a rest.
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. Alderman Padden, unfinished business? Thank you. Alderman Gardner, unfinished business?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Are we voting on your-
Yes, we are.
Okay. No unfinished business?
Alderman Tillman-
Nothing, Mayor.
Alderman Wilson?
Always. Thank you. Again, I want to leave the Second Ward with this thank you. Thank you for being neighborly, seeing something, saying something. Thank you to all of the residents that continue to drop off school supplies. If anyone in Kaugman City has children that go back to school and don't have supplies, it's not that we didn't try. We have several events going on on August 13th, all giving away school supplies. Thank you to the businesses of the Second Ward. Thank you to Public Works. I must say thank you for always responding when I ask you to respond, and then taking the effort to go beyond what you're responding to. Thank you. That is, that is all.
Alderman Navarrete?
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple matters for the city council. Let me start off by thanking the Small Business Association. We have a report from the Small Business Association for the number of applications, residents' applications, also the number of dollars that they've sent out. As many of you know, the Small Business Association worked with Alderman Smith and worked not only with Governor Pritzker to secure funding for residents. We had over 97 residents who applied for applications, 26 businesses, for a total of $625,000 now. The application process is still open until September 9th. Residents can apply, businesses can apply. So we get daily updates from the Small Business Association of the number of applicants. So we want to encourage everyone from the Parker Revokes, encourage the businesses that were affected or impacted by the fire, to apply through the small business, not only for this relief, but also for business loans that will help the businesses. So I want to not only thank the Small Business Association for being here in Kaugman City, but also for them sending us daily updates on the number of people who have applied and the amount of money that we've had. The next item I want to mention to the city council, tonight I would like to submit to the city council an appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have submitted the letter to the city council. I am hearing with submitting the appointment of Shonda Williams for the Zoning Board of Appeals. The term will expire on 2000, April 30th of 2025. Is there a motion to approve this appointment? Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Padden. Roll call.
Padden?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Williams?
Abstain.
Chris?
Yes.
On a motion and vote of five voting yes, I mean, four voting yes, one abstaining, one voting no, motion passes, and we want to congratulate Shonda Williams on being appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, as we conclude, we want to invite everyone to the Jazz on the Grass at the Kaugman City Library. Tonight, on the menu, let me just get this out of my phone, tonight is a Cajun truck. We sent this out to the residents. It is the Cajun Corn House, food and catering truck. The menu is extensive for the residents, and I'm told there are a lot of people out, so we want to invite everyone to the Kaugman City Library tonight for the Jazz on the Grass. And also, I don't know if we have our local businessmen here tonight, Gavin Jackson and his sister. Did you guys want to say a few words before we conclude?
You do know they're lawyers, right?
He's a lawyer.
Right. You never invite a lawyer to say anything.
We'll give you a minute time limit, so. He's a lawyer, passed.
Right.
No, just don't want to put the cart before the horse. Come on, Serina. My sister, Serita Knuckles. Again, we're the Jackson Knuckles Group here in Kaugman City. The Jackson Knuckles Group is the owner of Tilly's Pit and Pub on 1455 Ring Road. Always want to invite you to come out to have a delicious pulled boy sandwich at any time. And we are now in negotiations with this body to have a larger partnership for the development of the entertainment district. And we are very excited to continue to work with you and have discussions and do what we need to do for this city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. All right, everyone. There being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:03 PM? Motion made by Alderman Padden, second by Alderman Williams. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.